Stop people from talking though, so you can't.
Are you very entertaining.
It could be that simple. And I guess I'll have to click, right?
You guys are live.
It works. Oh, good evening, everyone. Thank you. Apologize for my lateness. I just had a racing around afternoon. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:37 PM. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have any public comment today? Okay, none. I'm just going to give a quick overview of our agenda tonight. Under discussion and possible vote, we have an intermunicipal agreement, IMA, for the Public Health Excellence for Shared Services Grant. And number two, trash and recycling discussion. And then, under appointments and resignations, we have one resignation and one, two, three, four appointment requests. Approval of minutes, old unfinished business, items not reasonably anticipated, town administrator time, select board time, correspondence. And following that, we will be going into an executive session to conduct strategy sessions for a contract. So we will not be coming back into open session after that executive session. So we're on, and I assume that's why you're here. Thank you, David. Yes, this intermunicipal agreement. We've seen it before, correct?
Yes, I believe you have.
I think so, too.
Yes, so I was here, I'm not sure exactly when, but it was sometime last year for this agreement. This is an updated agreement. I think there was one substantive change of how a community is added to the group. It's through a two-thirds vote of the advisory board. The agreement is in accordance with Section 17 of the IMA and approval by the Mass Department of Public Health. There were some minor language changes and things like that, and I think the only other substantive change is that West Newbury has removed themselves from the agreement. So I'm here to answer questions if the board has any. But I think those are the changes within the agreement. I think everything else pretty much has stayed the same, so.
Right, as I understand it, this is a grant. It doesn't cost the town any money whatsoever.
Correct.
The Board of Health, you'll appoint a representative to this advisory council?
Correct. The health agent by default would be the representative.
Okay. And then we are allowed, they list in Appendix B lists the shared services. Are those the only services that would be shared, or?
I think that the group will decide what the services are. I think that's probably not an exhaustive list.
Okay.
It's probably just examples of what those services could be. I can speak from my experience in my shared services agreement. You know, we have a pretty wide array of services that we offer to communities. We offer inspectional services. We offer nursing services. We offer epidemiological services. You know, so we try to do a wider range of things that we couldn't normally do, you know, on our day-to-day basis without this grant.
Right, so you run one of these grants through Salem where you're employed. So, and how many towns are in your, or cities, sorry, are in your agreement in Salem?
Eight.
Eight, okay. And do you have any idea why West Newbury decided to pull out?
I don't. I think it's unfortunate because I think it's an opportunity to, you know, really advance and enhance what their public health services are, but I don't know why they backed out.
Okay, so I'll open up to board members. Becky, do you have any questions or concerns?
No, after thoroughly reading the forty pages.
Well, there were two of them, too.
Yeah.
Version one, version two.
I do think it's worth mentioning that my understanding is that this has been vetted by town councils across the six communities that I think this is now, and they've all given it their stamp of approval.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Jason?
The only question I would have would be for Rebecca if she's talked to West Newbury at all about it.
I have not.
Okay.
Excuse me, I have not heard.
Thank you.
Mark? Ed?
No, I'm also.
Okay, so you're looking for a motion, even though you will be in charge of all this and appointing and everything, that we need to vote to accept the contract and sign it?
Right, so the town administration of the town government needs to sign it as well as the Board of Health, signifying that they're willing to sign on to the contract, so.
Okay.
So as the Chair of the Select Board, that would be you.
Sign. Okay, well, I'd need a motion first.
I'll make a motion that we sign the contract as recommended by the Board of Health. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? There'd be none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? It's unanimous with all members present. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would it be possible to get that signature?
Sure. If I possibly have a pen. Yep, got one. You're going to give Rebecca a copy of this, right?
Yes, Rebecca will get a copy of the FOI, since it's due by the end of August, it's signed by all the communities involved.
Let's see then.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, yes. Two zero two five.
Zero two five.
Perfect square number.
Absolutely.
And twenty plus twenty-five is forty-five, and that's the square root of two zero two five.
I wouldn't have been able to.
Geeky math knowledge.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Don't you just love it? I knew I liked that year.
Guess I can say I learned something tonight.
There's something new to be excited about. All right. So now we're going on to, and this is going to be a standing item on our agenda as requested at our last meeting, trash and recycling discussion. I think Rebecca, you have a memo or something?
Yes, I included in your packets for you this evening a very brief, brief summary of the initial survey results that we had received at the time of writing the memo, which was on Friday. We had six hundred and thirty responses to date. The survey is still open. So this evening, we were looking to have a more detailed discussion as to whether or not the board would like to close the survey. And I believe that Kathy, excuse me, the Chair, Cashan Ellis, has some updates from the Trash and Recycling Committee that had happened just this past Thursday in terms of what they would like to do moving forward. And after that discussion, I did point out in my memo some thoughts that I had about particularly moving forward with discussing the recycling cart option and whether or not the board would like to continue on that pathway forward, or would they also like to involve the Trash and Recycling Committee or to hold on that particular process. But I default to the Chair and the Board as to how they would like this discussion to unfold.
Well, probably the easiest decision, I think, that the Trash and Recycling Committee would like to see the board decide is to close the survey at this point because we keep going back and cleaning up the data. Unfortunately, a couple of the questions weren't worded in such a way that people could just pick one thing or another, and so they're putting in different expressions. So we're going back and standardizing the data so that we can actually use it. And that's, Becky was kind enough to come into one of our meetings and do a lot of that work, and I did some work over the weekend on it as well, but it would be helpful to have the survey ended at this point so that we don't continue to collect responses.
When was the last response received? Was it like this week?
I can check that for you right now.
Out of curiosity, if they're still trickling in, I don't know if like a February first or January thirty-first, like end of the month, or if you're thinking.
Well, we give people a heads up that it's going to close. I don't, I wouldn't mind that either. It's just I think we need, we didn't consider an ending, and I think, I think we need to.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be my thoughts. Based on some of the data that I looked at, and I'm going to compare it to some of the census data, which I have not had time to do, but I think we got a pretty good sampling. I did have to clean up the data in order to look at the number of households by age bracket, was what I was interested in, to see if we got a fair amount. So what I did do when I cleaned it up was that if someone didn't answer both questions, head of household age range plus how many ma, how many members in your household, that was the data I was looking at, I deleted that response, not from the original, but from the sample that I was working with. In doing that, I ended up with five hundred and forty-six households, and I collapsed the higher age bracket into sixty-five to one hundred years old. So, figure why not? And so we ended up with forty-one households between twenty-five and thirty-four, thirty-four years old, a hundred and thirty-five households, thirty-five to forty-four, forty-five to fifty-four-year-old, we had a hundred and twenty-six households, fifty-five to sixty-four, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifteen households, and sixty-five to one hundred, a hundred and twenty-nine households, for a total of five hundred and forty-six households. And roughly, the biggest groups were the thirty-five to forty-four was about twenty-five percent of the households, forty-five to fifty-four, twenty-three percent, fifty-five to sixty-four, twenty-one percent, and sixty-five and over, twenty-four percent. Which is, I think it's an okay representation, but I mean, we can look at the census data, too. But at this point, it seems that a vote to end the survey on January thirty-first, maybe that could be posted. So if people are trying to get around to it, they'll just get it done.
Right.
Then we'd only have to clean up the data one more time.
I think that's pretty fair because, you know, you've been talking with everybody, and everybody, they have their opinions, but nobody's showing up to the meetings and stuff like that, so, yeah, I think the thirty-first, end it, and if they didn't, don't do it by then.
Okay, so I have a motion for ending the survey on the thirty-first, and that we post that online.
I'll make a motion, we put the, post the end date, January thirty-first, for the trash survey.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion on that? There'd be none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Okay, unanimous, and everyone is present. So the next decision point, I believe, in the memorandum, there's mention of the recycling cart. And in the survey, even though the question was tied together whether you wanted both the thirty-five and the ninety-six, there was a second question that asked, would you like a larger recycling cart? And that was overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly yes. I'd like a larger vehicle for recycling.
So can we also have a smaller one? Because like, for me, I would never fill up a ninety-six gallon recycling cart.
Right, what?
So like, would it, would it be an option to somehow, you know, for a family of two have a sixty-four, and then, you know, a larger family get the ninety-six?
It's difficult to order that way, but I know that, no, but I do know that in other towns where they've gone to the standardized carts, when someone is asked, like, maybe they have a big hill to go down, and they've asked for a smaller cart because they felt the bigger one would be too difficult, it was able to be accommodated.
I was just curious if that was some type of option we could come up with, because like I said, I mean, I barely fill my eighteen, you know, gallon.
Rebecca, what, in your discussions with the, we'll call them the cart companies, but the one you're talking to about recycling, would it be, would we be able to accommodate a smaller-sized cart for anyone that wanted it?
So their advice in communicating with two separate companies is that if there is a specific reason that somebody would need a smaller cart, say if they were an older adult and had trouble, or if they were an individual with disabilities, then they would qualify for a smaller cart. But to open up that bucket just to anyone who would prefer a smaller cart becomes a lot more challenging in terms of delivery. And remember, those carts are all tied to the addresses, so if you were to sell your house, that would be the cart that would be at that house when you left. You would not take that with you. So in terms of a distribution of the carts themselves, and just from an operational perspective, it becomes challenging. But the option to allow individuals that would not be able to get the cart down to the bottom of their driveway, or there was a specific reason, that would be something that they would allow, or that they've seen other communities allow. But again, they set that if you are this, or if you are that, not, if you are not producing that much recycling, or if you would prefer a smaller cart, you are able to receive one by making an inquiry. Doesn't mean that it can't be done, but they've advised that it's a little bit more challenging, and we would need to put in protections in place to make sure that we would be able to accommodate.
Yeah, all right, no, that makes sense. I was just curious.
Is it possible if we go to the larger cart that we'd go to every other week for recycling pickup, so people wouldn't be putting it out every single week? So you might use up some of that extra room?
So that would be a negotiation of the next contract. So we could ask for bi-weekly recycling. Our current contract does not allow for bi-weekly recycling. We do have weekly recycling. They would not just change that if we requested it. If we do want to proceed with opening up the contract and ask for that as a negotiation item, we can certainly do so, but there's no guarantee that they would. But in negotiating the next contract, we can certainly ask for bi-weekly recycling and have a larger cart to accommodate such.
Okay. So that is one of the recommendations in the memorandum tonight. So if you want more time to think on it, it can go to the next meeting, but if you feel like you have enough information on the recycling cart, the cost of going forward with it is roughly, what, a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars?
That is correct. And I did ask the vendor for a price for the sixty-four gallon, if that was again, another preferred cart size for the recycling, not the ninety-six, if they wanted to stay with the weekly recycling, or if you thought that the sixty-four was sufficient. And that would bring the price to a little under a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. I know, I think I can speak for the recycling and trash committee that they would like to see the recycling container larger than the trash container, just visually, to give that message of this is where we want more stuff going. You know, for whatever it's worth, that, I know that's how they all feel. So they would support the larger recycling container. And the way it would be financed right now, we wouldn't need a, we wouldn't need a town meeting right now, we would be able to do it from the trash, but how would we do it now, before a town meeting? Would we do it through the trash?
If we wanted to move forward with the purchase of the carts, we would need to do it as part of, in a warrant article for fiscal year twenty-six. So it would be as part of the annual town meeting voting process. We could do that, or we could add a financing option and put additional monies in the trash budget to accommodate a financing of the carts. At the end of sixty months, we would then own the carts. So that is an option for us to pursue as well. So given the direction that the board would like to take, that will dictate our actions as to whether or not we need to put aside a free cash allocation, or whether or not we want to move forward with a financing option, which is a smaller sum of money, about six thousand dollars or so a year in the trash budget to accommodate the purchase of the carts.
So do you need an exact vote of the board tonight on the financing option, or just a vote to hold a placeholder for the larger cart?
It's really just opening up the conversation with the budget discussions going on, and with us preparing the warrant and our warrant articles. It's important to know whether or not the Select Board would like to move forward with the recycling cart purchased, or if they would like to hold. So it's not that I need a vote this evening, but I do want the board to initiate or to have that conversation and to decide what direction you'd like to go, so that I can then respond accordingly. Because if the answer is do nothing, then we do nothing. So I would hate to put forward something or do something that the board did not want to see.
Well, I guess, I'll ask, is there a consensus on the board that you'd like to at least see this option put into print, so that it's a placeholder in the annual town meeting warrant at this time?
Well, I know, I was really hoping some other people would show up, but did you want to speak in the trash?
I.
Because I really wanted this to be more of an open dialogue with the, with the public.
Yeah. Good evening, I'm Brian Canizaro, twenty-seven Groveland Commons Way. I'm kind of at a disadvantage. First of all, for a matter of transparency, I am the Chair of my HOA community. So I come before you as an individual. I do not represent my HOA in my conversations for this evening, so I want to be clear on that. We don't get trash pickup from the town, because we are part of an HOA. So anything that I would have to say would be kind of moot and wouldn't really have any balance. As far as on the outside, for, just for, again, clarification, I do, I originally come from Malden, so I am aware of what the trash people that you've been talking to, they said Malden was one of the cities that they put these carts in. And I agree with the Chair that the larger can, or the trash receptacle, whatever you want to call it, would be more appropriate for recycling. As far as the trash component of it, I agree with Mark that a lot of young couples with young families, they're going to fill that up more so. So I think as a matter of consistency, everybody should get a ninety-six, sixty-four gallon trash receptacle, unless they have a special circumstance where they only need the thirty-five. And that would need to be proof-based, however you want to set that up. I think that would probably be the best thing for the town. But as far as everything else beyond that, it would be inappropriate for me to speak about it, because like I says, I don't get my trash picked up by the town. I wish we did, but it's, you know, it's a town, it's a municipal thing that the towns, all three hundred and sixty-plus towns don't allow trash pickup at high-density living. That's an option before, you know, boards like yourselves. But as far as a member of the community, my only concern would be how the math works out. I've asked Rebecca last week if she was able to provide to me a component of the taxes that I pay on my property, what percentage of that actually goes to the trash? Simply because, because we live in a community, there are certain funding that we all pay for, just because we're part of a community. Trash is just part of that, even though I don't get it. Just like the schools, or the police, or the fire. I may never need those, but because I'm part of the community, I pay for that. So I just want to know what percentage of that was, because every meeting that this board has done, the Trash and Recycling Board has done, there's never been any mention or any representation of any condominium or townhouse people involved with it. And I think a lot of people out there, the community that I represent is constantly asking me questions, are we going to have to pay more in our taxes? Because the trash committee is talking about, you know, a hundred-plus thousand dollars for trash cans, and, well, we don't get services from that, so on and so on and so on. So Rebecca was kind enough to set some time aside. I was supposed to come see her today, but I couldn't to kind of give me that information, so I go back to my people and explain to them, based on the fact that because we are a member of an HOA, we don't technically are involved with that. And the reason why is because when they see from this meeting or the trash recycle meeting, they hear two thousand, twenty-two hundred homes. Well, when you actually go on the website and you look how many actual homes are in Groveland, there's like twenty-seven hundred.
Yes.
So they don't see that piece. They're somewhat confused. So beyond that, I know that I support whatever the board and the trash committee is doing, because I think there's a benefit to it. But beyond that, I really don't have anything to say. I just want to just, you know, tell you what I think.
So in response, so to tell people who don't have trash pickup, one way this does, well, there's a couple ways this does impact you directly. The first is that we have a really bad history of throwing trash on the override whenever we can afford the school budget. The school budget passes in two towns, fails in Groveland, trash goes on the override. So a general override in that one year, your taxes are raised to pay for the trash. But that's not a dedicated stream for the trash. So guess what happens a few years on after that? Again, we have a history of failed trash overrides, past trash overrides, and there are towns around us, as close as Merrimack, that don't fully fund trash pickup. Our Georgetown, there's all different models out there, and what we're looking at as the committee is all these different models, and the fees associated with them, and trying to stabilize the trash budget, so that as it goes up, of course, much faster than two and a half percent, it may not mean a lot to your tax dollar, but to our town departments, it's taking away valuable funding. You know, the, the money they need to hire another firefighter, another police officer. The only flexible budget we have are the town departments, the staffing in here, some minimal expenses, technology. Everything else is debt and assessments. And trash is something that we have control over. So many towns have moved part of that cost, the cost associated with tonnage, outside the tax rate, so that it becomes a user fee. And over time, you know, they can differentiate it so that some throughout more, pay more. Initially, maybe not, but it becomes a user fee. We've seen that happen in water and sewers. They went enterprise, became their own standalone budget, and they too have fees, and they had to get rid of discounts in order to keep things stable. And, you know, this is part of what the committee is working on. In our summary report, we'll include, you know, the history of the overrides, the impact of this million-dollar, approaching million-dollar budget on our town departments and, and the human services and public safety that we, our highways, that we just never can fully fund. Yes, the school, everyone blames the school for everything, but that's not everything. You know, we have some other areas that we can certainly look at, and this is one of them. So the committee is in the process of now assembling its report, and our next meeting, we'll be looking at drafts of it. Following that, we do want to have a public information session where everybody gets to hear the report, see what the survey said, see what findings we've come together from looking at surrounding communities, from having, we have an expert from the state working with us. We've had other experts come in and speak to us. And, you know, the, the whole concept of a trash contract has now become a highly complex piece of economics. There's a lot of moving parts in it, and we need the expertise of someone with our town administrators to navigate this.
I can sympathize. I mean, I commend this board, the trash committee board. I commend it because I provide the same function that this board and the trash committee does in my own community, because that's part of my responsibility. So I commend you for what you do and the complexities that are involved with it. Just to end, as much information as you can provide forward, I'm sure you hear this multiple times, is very helpful. I'm only here just to simply say, from people that do not get that resource from the town, because they pay for it separately, all they seem to hear is, they're doing all this thing that's going to affect my taxes. And I've done my best to try to tell them that you have a standard component of your property tax that pays for that. That will never change. The idea is the additional cost for the trash, whatever it is, wants to be outside of that component. And they, for some reason, they're just still not getting it, so.
Well, they should understand that, that in taking some of that outside the tax rate, it will hopefully avoid and future overrides just for trash. I can't promise other things that I don't have control over, but we do have control over the trash budget.
Yeah, no, no, I fully understand, but like I said, I just wanted to just bring that forth, but thank you for your time, and again, I think the committee, this committee does a good job, and the trash committee does also, and I wish as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's funny, because I also received an email from someone in the fifty-five and over who doesn't understand why they have to pay for trash, since they already paid for trash pickup. And I said, well, we're working on that.
Yes.
We're working on it, you know? So getting back to that, as you heard me say, we're, we're in the process of drafting what hopefully will be a summary report. Hopefully not forty pages of blah-bitty blah. I'd like to bring that summary report back to the Trash and Recycling Committee at our February meeting, and then release. February meeting and then release it so that we can have a public information session, I was thinking in March, if that's okay with the select board, have the trash and recycling committee, instead of their regular meeting, have a public information session, somehow summarize the report, maybe in a few slides, but have copies of the report available in advance. And then, again, get a temperature of what people are saying. We did have a lot of people attend our last trash and recycling committee. It was a lot because nobody goes. And this time, we had people. And their comments were interesting and they had good questions, and I feel like it was really informative to be able to hear what they were wondering about, don't you, yeah?
Yeah.
And to be able to say, oh, okay, well, we can explain why we were thinking that. And then they said, well, this is what we're thinking. And we're like, okay, this is helpful because we don't often understand everything that they're concerned about. I mean, other than just cart size. If it was just a cart size issue, we probably could decide this in a couple of weeks, but there's so much more to it than just cart size.
Well, it is, and I think a big part of it is, is the state recognizes that it's a big problem in terms of how much trash is generated by everybody in America in general. And they're looking at ways to incentivize trying to minimize that. I pulled up a chart here that shows us as America creating 624,700 metric tons per day of trash. China produces 520,548 metric tons, less than what we do. And then, and third is Brazil at 149,000. So when you look at how much trash we produce, it exceeds so many other countries, and it's not sustainable. And it's the state's way of starting to try to get people to relook at how much trash they create, how much recycling they can be doing, how much they should be doing. And it's something that people should really look at. And I know when Brian spoke at the last meeting, there was something that he said that really stuck with me. He was talking about not being trendsetters. There's five towns right now that already have the 35-gallon. But he also said, is Groveland ready? Have we prepared Groveland for, to be this? And because we did implement two barrels from unlimited, but it wasn't enforced like he had pointed out. So that, that becomes a real issue. Have we prepared for them? What's the lifespan of these barrels that we're going to be getting? Can we change it in five years, 10 years? What's that going to look like? And those are, those are some of the questions that I have moving forward. But I also have to step out into the planning board because I'm needed.
Oh.
I just wanted to make a statement.
Okay. Well, thank you for visiting. I don't know, I can't make this up. Yes, hey, go ahead.
Just reading from a paragraph here, says although we applied for a recycling partnership grant to help with the purchase of recycling carts, we were informed that we did not qualify due to the tonnage of recycling we currently produce, which exceeds the level of other communities in the state, which seems to mean that we're doing better than a lot of the communities as far as the recycling goes. Which brings me to a comment here, that opinions on the proposed changes with the 35-gallon and the 96-gallon recycling cot generally viewed as insufficient by most respondents. Well, if you go to a, every other week, if the 96 is not sufficient now for the week, and you go to, and you go to recycling every two weeks, isn't that 96-gallon going to be overflowing? If it's overflowing, as they put it out each week right now? So that's something that needs to be looked at. It almost looks like that every two weeks wouldn't work. And where's this money coming from to purchase these carts? Whether it be the recycling or the trash carts? The town is going to be purchasing these, are we getting any, any money from any of these companies that might want to bid on it? And some communities, some of the communities, the company that is picking up the trash supplies, supplies the carts, but it looks like we're going to be buying them. And where's the money coming from?
Okay. So I can answer just about everything. First of all, the other towns are all funding their carts in various manners, just as we would. We're not any different, they're not doing anything better than we are. We are producing more trash tonnage than the average town in Massachusetts, and that was noted by the state expert. He also suggested that we could perhaps try to reapply for some grant monies. I think, it's not a lot of money, I think, I'm not, I may be wrong, but maybe Rebecca could correct me. Boxford got like $30,000 grant, was it like 30,000 towards the purchase of their carts? Do you know that number?
I don't.
Okay. That sticks in my head. I usually remember numbers pretty well. So, I mean, you're talking about, you know, when you buy all of these carts, it's a couple hundred thousand dollar outlay, depending on how you do it. Some towns finance it, so they own them at the end of 10 years. I think West Newbury did that. Another approach would be to finance it and then decide, when you renegotiate the contract with the automated pickup, see what your savings are and perhaps use some of that funding to pay off the loan so you don't have it sitting there for 10 years and you don't pay whatever the interest is on it. So there's a number of vehicles to do this. Towns have been doing it all along here. It's getting to the point that, excuse me, towel, I cough still, apologize. The serious part of this is that if we do nothing, if we put our head in the sand and we try to just, you know, push through to another contract with the manual pickup, we may find that there are haulers that won't even bid on us. And we will be paying an extraordinarily high cost just to pick up the trash. And that, that cost, that 600,000 that it's going to, I believe, next year, if not this year already, that's going to take a chunk of money away from our town operating departments. That's where it's going to come from. That's where it always comes from. From the raises we weren't able to give employees for years and years, the salaries that were shown in the salary study to be underfunded for years and years. We operate now with no stipends for our volunteer boards. We've consolidated the town planner and the town administrator job, which we never anticipated doing that when we set out and created the job. But we did that because we didn't have the funds to fund that position. We saw the Board of Health is getting us in a consortium so that we can hopefully have enough health services because the sanitary agent and the nurses are all part-time employees, they're not full-time. We saw during the pandemic, we desperately needed grant money to pay for all the things that we had to address during the pandemic. It was, it was very difficult with our small staffing. So this is something that we have the ability to do something about. What I would like to ask from the select board, if possible, is your permission and your vote to let us go forward, finish our summary report, and then go to an information session, which of course is open to everybody, but have the trash recycling committee hold an information session in a bigger forum than we had at our last meeting so that people can really talk to us and read the report and see what other towns are doing. We'll try to consolidate some of the critical information about the contracts surrounding our town, because I know it's really confusing what's happening here, and it's dynamic and it's changing. That we can separate and explain the recycling part of the business. Rebecca's done some amazing spreadsheets on that that really show you that, for example, in 2018, we were actually in the black. Even though we paid like a $100,000 processing fee for recycling, we were getting some money back. But then in our current contract, we only get 50% of that money. But on top of that, in our current contract, we're charged a 10% contamination fee on our recycling, whether it's contaminated or not. So Rebecca's recommended that we could ask for an audit and find out how contaminated is our recycling? And that can be part of our next negotiation. We can also go separately and negotiate with recycling centers rather than trying to put it all into one contract. So there's a lot of really good things, I think, that can come out of letting the task group finish its work, produce a report, open it to the public, you'll be listening, you'll get everything, and then it comes back to this board to make the decisions. If that sounds okay with everybody, that's what I would like to say we're going to do. Yes?
Reading this paperwork here on the results, some of the results of the survey, it seems like that the recycling and trash committee will abandon the idea of a 35-gallon trash container, based upon this, that they're not, people aren't in favor of.
People, I agree with you. The survey shows people are not ready to move to that size. But that doesn't mean that if we can offer that at a lower rate than the 64-gallon, it should be considered. Because the more we can show the state that we're trying to implement something that's unit-based, that shows people you pay for what you throw, the more likely we are to be qualifying for the grants. And that's, initially, they were saying if we didn't do the 35, we weren't going to be eligible for the grants. I'm still kind of arguing with them, saying, here's what we're moving towards, we're making these great, we do have the overflow bags and that qualifies as pay as you throw right there. And I would think with a user fee on the cart, that would additionally qualify us, but we need to clarify that and get that in writing. But you're correct, the survey said that people are not ready to move to 35-gallon. But if there were some people that wanted to, I'd like to see if we can offer that option. So that if somebody says, I'd like to lower my user fee, can I do 35? I hope we can say yes.
And do you know why?
Why?
The state has, has a grant for the 35-gallon containers?
Do you have the answer?
Because the municipalities don't want it, so they have an abundance of them that they, that they'd like to get rid of. Because if you look at even some of our surrounding communities, Andover was just in the paper this past week, I think they were going to, they were going to 96 and 96, but I don't remember. But nobody likes the 35-gallon trash or recycling containers. That's why they have an abundance of them.
I don't have any information that would support that statement. However, I will say that I feel that the towns that have moved to the 35 first made the move to the automated pickup. I don't think they did it all in one swoop, you know what I mean? Like, they were making steps before us. So I feel like if we make really prudent steps in the right direction, we're going to be improving the trash pickup, we're going to be lowering the curbside cost, which will help our town departments and our budget. And hopefully, if we go to a, some type of a fee that's outside the tax rate, we'll start towards that movement that you pay for what you throw. I mean, I don't feel like the stickers or bags have worked really well. Merrimack, I know, does the bags, but it seems cumbersome. So the only bag I think this committee is in favor of is the overflow bag. But I would like a vote of the board to allow the committee to go forward, to finish its report, and do a public information session before bringing everything back to the board for its decision.
And when will they get that back to the board?
Following the information session in March. He came back. He's fast.
Sneaky.
Did you hear everything I said?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Absolutely.
Positive.
I think the information.
Oh, we have another, go ahead.
The information session.
You're our whole crowd tonight, so.
No, I just have a quick question.
Sure.
I realize that it's in the purview of this board to move forward with whatever recommendations the trash committee brings forth. It's ultimately your decision to go forward with this.
All right.
Because that's what we vote you in to do. My question is this, if, according to one of the select board members, it was mentioned back many times back that they would like to see this come before the community at town meeting. If that was to ever happen, and the finance board came back and gave this an unfavorable position from their perspective, under what, I mean, do you have the authority to overstep that?
No.
If they say no?
All the contracts are subject to town meeting approval.
No, no, I'm saying the finance board, when the finance board.
Well, they can recommend against it, but if the town meeting votes against it, we don't have a contract. We can't sign a contract that's been voted.
Okay. I mean, but if the town votes for it, even though the finance committee says it's unfavorable.
Yes.
You ultimately have to go by what those 100 people.
Yes.
Basically say. So therefore, you don't, carte blanche, have the authority to overstep the finance board outside of the fact that if the community says yes or no, that's, that's your driving factor?
Yes, that's correct. Exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So to move off this topic, I would just need a motion to allow the trash and recycling to do their final report and have an information session and then bring back to the board everything all at once.
Isn't that what the trash committee is supposed to be doing?
Yes. But it seems like.
I don't think we need an additional vote for that. I mean, I just think you should.
I just want to make sure everybody was on board for that, for it to go that way, if that's all right.
Put everything together and, so you can put together a comprehensive list for us to look at. I mean, ultimately, I mean, I know that we've come a long way in terms of what we've heard. I do suggest people keep showing up at the meeting so we could have some more open dialogue. I would like to have it on the agenda until you come in with March, just so we can have people come in so we can have a conversation.
The March would be an open information session.
Yeah, well, we should have the open meeting session even separate from the meeting, just to get as many people as we can.
Right. Well, that's, instead of our trash meeting, we'd have our information session meeting, if that works out. So we'll try to do it early March, so we get this back to you as quickly as possible.
So do we need a vote or no?
I don't think we do. I think it's just, that's the way, the way.
I think the town administrator wanted.
I would like a vote because I've heard a lot of different feedback from residents about who's making the decisions and whether it's the select board that is listening to what the public is saying, or if it's the trash recycling that's listening to what the public is saying, and whether or not the trash recycling is going to be writing their opinion of their opinion to the select board, and whether or not the select board is listening directly to the residents. So the feedback and the comments that I've heard is they would like to figure out who's ultimately listening to the residents. So part of the feedback was that I received was that they should take an official vote as to who's holding the public hearing or public meeting.
The information session.
Or public informational session, so that I have a vote of the board and can say that the select board has voted for the trash and recycling committee to hold the public workshop or to have the select board do the public workshop. I just need confirmation as to which board's doing what, so that when they call me, I can answer that question.
We're clarifying the situation. So.
I mean, ultimately, it's just a committee, they're just gathering information.
Yes.
I mean, it's not like they're making any decisions.
No.
They can't make any decision because it has to come back to the board. I mean, that's the way it is. The board has a lot of responsibility, not only to listen to the residents, but they also have to abide by what's right in moving forward. And so it's a very big balancing act in making that all work together. So, yeah, I mean, we can listen, sort of like the MB3, the MBTA, the 3A law. We can listen, but it's still law. I mean, Milton lost that case. All the residents are against it, but we still have to comply with law. I mean, it's, it's.
Right. I think the clarification, Jason, is just that, if the board would just make a motion to say that they approve the task force to continue working to finalize the report, we've received the survey results, we've heard from them on the size of the trash cart, and we're going, moving forward to put together a report in a few slides to do a public information session so that we can present to the public not a bunch of numbers, but an actual, like, summary of the results of the survey, the results of our research across, and also our state expert. Brian can be there to answer even more overarching questions that are beyond us. And that way, anybody in the public could zoom in or come in, and that'll be the only thing on that night. And it'll be, the floor will be open.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to allow the committee to continue on with what we originally tasked them with in terms of gathering the information and presenting it to the board so we can have a well-informed discussion about which way we should take the town in terms of our trash disposal.
Does that include allowing the task force to have a public information session?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, any more discussion?
Just real quick, so when I joined your meeting last time, it was really informative with the other residents. I got a lot of information, so I'm hoping that same group will be there, and other people will be there as well, too.
Right.
This hearing, direct from the residents, is.
We might move it into a circular area in here, next meeting, just to give everybody a little more room, we're kind of packed in by the trash cans.
Right, right. So I think between the survey results, I mean, obviously, I got a chance to see it, right? We were talking about the recycling bin before the 96-gallon, I know some of the residents, Mark, I know you don't fill it, but a lot of people order online, right? So you get the cardboard. I know one of the things they talked about was the overflow of the 96, right? Right now, we have unlimited recycling, so this would technically be restricting it, but also making it more favorable, because it's a good size.
Right.
So that's a part of the discussion as well, too. So, yep, that's all I can say.
Ed?
Well, I could make a suggestion that, unlike the last meeting, if the meeting of the Trash and Recycling Committee is televised live, I know the last meeting wasn't live, it was taped, but I think it's something that the people are interested in, should be held in this room, so it can go out live, so people can actually watch it. And if they, if they see something that they, while they're watching it at home, they want to come down and put their two cents worth in, they should be able to do that. It should be, it should be live on the cable channel, not taped.
Okay, well, we've been just working with the smaller room and the equipment that was available there, and as long as we have access to the larger room, we're not hiding anything, we're more than happy to be live. I kind of thought we were. So, that shows how much I know. But if I could call for a vote to allow the committee to move forward with its charge and its public information session, that would clarify those two steps. And all in favor of that? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, so, I think we've talked a lot of trash. I had to say it, come on.
We're just getting started.
You gotta give me.
That was Mark's line.
I know, he has better lines than I do, any day.
I'll come up with something before the end of the meeting.
He will, he definitely will. It's bound to happen, okay. And let me just look at the agenda, I think we're up to appointments and resignations. So we have a resignation of Leah Crane from the Board of Registars. I read her letter, sorry to see her go, it doesn't seem like she has to, but she doesn't want anything hanging over her that might be a problem, that's my understanding.
I believe there were two different opinions that were issued, one to the town clerk and one to the individual who called the attorney of the day, and so to err on the side of caution, that individual decided to resign.
Yeah, if I could just ask a question, I know that, I've called ethics before, because I'm a schoolteacher, and as such, I have to only be paid for my one job, and not from this job, and then I abstain from issues regarding my school, Woodya Votek. But when I call, they always ask, are you calling about yourself? When you call the attorney of the day, and they'll only give you an opinion about yourself. They won't, like, I can't call about Jason and say, well, you know, Jason Naves is blabbity, blabbity, blah, they'll say, we don't do that. At least, that's my experience, so.
Mine as well, yeah.
Okay, but anyway, I'm sorry to see that she feels she has to resign, but I'm glad that she's, she's on the CPA committee, correct? The CPC committee?
Yes, she's been appointed to the CPC.
Well, so she'll still be involved with our town. I thank her for serving on the Board of Registars, can I get a motion to accept her resignation?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Leah Crane from the Board of Registars.
Second that.
Okay, and I accept it with regrets, and thank her for her service on the Board of Registars, all in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, we have an appointment for Andrew, oh, boy, these names, you guys are killing me. Jacobaz, Jacobaz, am I saying that pretty well? Andrew Jacobaz of Amesbury, to the position of Reserve Dispatcher effective January 21st, 2025, for a one-year probationary period.
I'll make a motion to appoint Andrew J. of Amesbury to the position of Reserve Dispatcher effective January 21st, 2025, for a one-year probationary period.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. An appointment of, now, did you say this, Jaslyn, Jaslyn Diaz of Lawrence, to the position of Reserve Dispatcher, effective January 21st, 2025, for a one-year probationary period.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jaslyn Diaz of Lawrence to the position of Reserve Dispatcher effective January 21st, 2025, for a one-year probationary period.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? There be none, all in favor? It is unanimous. And I need a motion to appoint Gerardo Vincent of Lawrence to the position of Reserve Dispatcher effective January 21st, 2025, for a one-year probationary period.
I'll make a motion to appoint Gerardo Vincent of Lawrence to the position of Reserve Dispatcher, effective January 21st, 2025, for a one-year probationary period.
Second.
Any discussion? There be none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. And appoint Caitlin Pukarski of Newton, New Hampshire, to the position of Reserve Dispatcher effective January 21st, 2025, for a one-year probationary period.
I'll make a motion to appoint Caitlin Pukarski of Newton, New Hampshire, to the position of Reserve Dispatcher, effective January 21st, 2025, for a one-year probationary period.
And any discussion? There be none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Okay, that completes our appointments and resignations. Do we have minutes? No minutes, so we'll go on to all the unfinished business. Ed, you have all the unfinished business?
I don't have anything.
Mark?
I was just curious about my elm trees downtown, if we've made any progress on trimming them before the snow rips them in half again this year. I was just curious about that, because we had to wait till they were dormant, and.
There's currently no plans at this point in time. I know Mike Dempsey, working with the Community Preservation Committee, and putting forward that application, is still working to figure out what we can do next. I also know, in working with Arthur Marcos in the Highway Department, as well as Kevin Snow with the Groveland Electric Light, we have sat down with the arborist that was brought forward with Rennie, and we have had productive conversations. We did apply for that grant again, to see whether or not we were successful in this round. Apparently, last round, we thought we had applied, but an application wasn't submitted, so this year, an application was submitted. We should hear about awards in the next few months. That being said, if there was something to be done, it would be the following winter that we would see any work, unfortunately, unless there's something that can be done as part of the CPC application, that Mike Dempsey's working on with, I believe, Arthur, to kind of finalize, since that was one piece of the larger application. But that information, I do not have readily available, but I do know that there's other efforts, including the preservation of those trees down at Elm Park, that is being initiated by the Highway Department, as well as the Electric Light Department.
I was just curious, because it's going on two years now.
If you'd like, we could potentially add it, if the chair would like to the agenda, and maybe we can invite folks to, in to provide updates of where we stand, and give you more specifics, or together a memo for you, and.
No, no, like I said, I was just curious.
Government moves slow, you didn't know that? Government moves slow.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, we're all good, we're all good.
Okay. Jason, all done finished?
No old business for me.
Nothing's old business?
Not for me.
Not for you? Becky?
No old business, no.
Okay. I had three little quick items that I wondered about, Valley Screw Building, do we have any updates on that?
No, we're still currently working with the MVPC on getting together an estimate that was requested as part of the conversation we initiated with EAP and MASTEP on potentially forgiving the liens on the property, so that we could move forward with the foreclosure process. They won't consider that until we get the information as to what it would cost for remediation and additional removal of contaminated products within the building, more so asbestos and the building materials that were used to build the building, not necessarily the contamination from the actual use of the building. So, once we finalize those details, we're assembling a report, and working with the Economic Development Committee and the Chair, Bill Dunn, in efforts to do so, and present that to MASTEP, EAP, and we are working very closely with Senator Tar's office, as well as Congressman Moulton's offices, to kind of push that initiative forward. So, they just went out to the site, I want to say, last week or two weeks ago, so we should be receiving that report from them shortly. And that was done at no cost to the town, that was technical assistance that was provided through the MVPC, through their Brown's Field Assessment Program that they have. So we are moving forward, it's just as Select Board Member Watson pointed out, sometimes things can go very slowly.
Well, I mean, it's not your fault that it's slow, it's, this has gone on since, you know, what, 1980-something, right? The owner was allowed to walk away, right? All the back taxes have piled up, those are not going to get paid, and yet we have to put aside overlay money every year against those taxes, that are never going to be paid. And then, the second concern, and I mean, I'm not an expert on groundwater and all that, but if there are things in the building that is now falling down, and rain running through it, isn't that going to wash into our groundwater? And can we do something to do some tests and see? Because perhaps if we could show them that their delays are now going to perhaps have an impact on town water, maybe that would do something? I mean, I'm just, nothing seems to do anything with that site.
If at your request, if that is a request, I would like to put it on the agenda for a next board meeting for a discussion, and hopefully, at that point in time, I'll have the report from the MVPC that we can discuss, as well as the memo that we've been assembling, detailing the history, and kind of talking through what the DEP and EAP had proposed, and efforts for us to move forward. So I'd be happy to do that, if you would like to put it on the next agenda.
What do you think? I mean, I think it's important that we don't forget about it.
It's really falling apart now, you can see the walls.
Yeah, the rain's now going right inside of it, so if there's materials in there that are not good, right, that's going to come down. And the other, the second thing I had was real quick, that at one point, the church property that abutted that was something being looked at, are we, is that gone? Did somebody buy it, or is it just sitting there doing nothing?
So, to my knowledge, it has not been purchased, and it has not been sold to date. I'm not sure if anything's changed, but it doesn't look like there's been any movement on that particular piece of property, and I don't see it on the market right now, so I'm not sure whether or not the ArchDiocese reconsidered their efforts, but we have not received any notification as of date.
Okay, and then the third thing, the last thing, was just, I know that you and Becky were good enough to meet with the Groveland Housing Authority, to ask if they had any plans to add any additional units, and they said they really don't have the time and the manpower. Does the town have the ability, if we partnered with somebody, to add an extra building in that, in that area? Because at one point, I believe the Chair of the Groveland Housing Authority said there had been a plan to put another building in there.
So we can definitely, again, add that as another agenda item as well, if you would like to discuss it in further detail, but essentially, you are correct, we are able to partner with multiple different organizations, or we are able to create an Affordable Housing Trust, in efforts to create additional affordable housing units within Groveland. The issue is, the Groveland Housing Authority does not have the capacity internally to manage those units, so they have been a little more outspoken as to whether or not they want to take on additional properties in Groveland and/or construct other units in Groveland. That being said, again, like we mentioned, there's organizations like Habitat for Humanity and other private organizations that are more than willing to partner with the town in exchange for, you know, land and/or partnerships to construct affordable housing within Groveland. And we can certainly do so by, you know, selecting a certain area of land that we'd like to see, and developing an RFP, and as part of that, the town would have, say, over what type of building would be constructed, how it would be done, and also have other certain specifics involved, whether or not we have local preference, and other types of options that we could afford. But again, that is much part of a larger conversation, but we can certainly bring in the parties and have that detailed conversation with the board, if that's what you would like to do. But at that meeting, the Groveland Housing Authority, while very much wanting to do what they could for Groveland, are finding it difficult to improve and repair and modernize the current units that they have back at River Pines now, and to take on the additional units with the limited capacity that they have, it just does not seem feasible for them at this point in time. But they are willing to try and help us partner, get us in contact with others that they've worked with, and support us in any way, shape, or form that they can.
So, and the Bethany Holmes proposal still hasn't been approved, is that, would it be improper to reach out to Bethany Holmes and see if that's the site here, would be something they would consider?
So I know that we have not heard back from EOHLC on the project eligibility letter as of date. We did reach out to them, there was a couple of people who had commented and said, you know, have we heard a response? Is this just automatically approved? So I did reach out and just say, we have not heard back, we were wondering if a determination has been issued. They said that they had forwarded the request up to the Undersecretary, and I want to say that was probably three weeks ago, and I still not have heard a response. So, we do not know where the application for Bethany Holmes for 36-gallon, currently is, it's still with the state, and again, from our knowledge, no decision has been made as of now. That being said, if the board wanted to take an initiative as to looking and identifying another area in town, they could certainly do so, but you cannot just select one organization to provide housing. You would need to make it a competitive process, under procurement laws, to allow for somebody else, or to, for somebody to purchase.
For other proposals.
Or to have the ground lease, or to build, or whatever it is that the town's looking to do. And you would first and foremost want to start off with a feasibility study. You never want to go into these things where we have X amount of square feet, we want affordable housing. You always want to bring in a consultant to say all the details, to make sure that when you do put it out to bid, you're getting what it is that you voted and what you wanted. And it does require a vote at town meeting to surplus that land.
Okay.
And/or to move forward with a ground lease. You cannot just do so as a vote with the Select Board. So, there is a process, and if we are looking to do that, I would first suggest trying to bring on a consultant to identify and help us prepare an RFP to bring forward, that again, would be used for annual town meeting, to make sure that the voters knew exactly what it was that you're looking to do, and they had that document available.
Okay, but we have the land, supposedly.
We own, well, the.
Yeah, we own the land.
If I remember correctly, you're talking about the land that's behind the police station over at 111 Main Street.
Yep, exactly.
Yes, we do own that land.
Okay.
And despite all that, we still wouldn't be able to move forward unless we had the Housing Trust established?
That's not correct, we could move forward with a private organization if we wanted to, and we wanted to move forward with a, with a procurement process to dispose, or to surplus, or to have somebody purchase, or, you know, dispose of the land, or surplus the land. But having an Affordable Housing Trust would allow this board to help appoint members to a Housing Trust, that would then be able to do that on the fly, that would, you know, a house lot becomes available, and you have a Housing Trust that wants to purchase that house, and to provide affordable housing options for the town. They would have the ability to do that. They could either partner with a private organization, or they could do it internally, they could take use of the funds that we have set aside currently as part of the inclusionary zoning, we have monies that if you do not want to build the actual, actual affordable unit, you can put a certain percentage of money, based upon however many units, per what the bylaw specifically states. And so we have about, over a million dollars sitting there, that we're not using to create affordable housing. Having an Affordable Housing Trust will then allow us to utilize those monies to create affordable housing options. That is, in fact, something that we are proposing to explore as part of a CPC project, that we just put forward in 2025, that would have a consultant that would help us walk through that, and figure out exactly what that process would look like, what are the pros, what are the cons? If you did move forward with a Housing Trust, what would that look like? What steps does the town need to take, and what that means for the community? So, that is all being vetted through that process, if we are successful in receiving those funds for an Affordable Housing Trust creation. But to your question, it is not required.
Perfect.
Okay, so, you have a proposal to create, or to create the trust, or to have a consultant advise on how to create the trust?
So we have, it's a, one application, but it does two things. The first application is to do the Affordable Housing Trust, to explore the creation of an Affordable Housing Trust, not to create it, but to explore what it would need to be done in order to create such, and utilize and capitalize the funding that we have in our inclusionary zoning set aside.
Okay.
The second part of that is to try and create, with a consultant, an actual program to put in place, that would use CPC funds to help individuals who are income-eligible make repairs on their home. So, if you're a current resident, and you have, you need window repair, or you need something in your house, and you're struggling financially, and you, you meet a certain income threshold, you would be able to apply for funding to move forward with that project. And so CPC funds would be able to be utilized for the creation of a program of that. So the consultant would help us create that program, what it would look like, how it would be structured, what would the guidelines be, what would the threshold be? And then, the next year, in 2026, we would put forward an application, if successful, to set aside X amount of dollars, to then carry that program out. So, we would have a certain amount, so, you know. have a certain amount, so, you know, so-and-so needs, you know, 10,000, so-and-so needs 15,000. You know, we can then have that, and we can generate the success of providing CPC funds for income-eligible folks to take care of their homes and live in Groveland and not feel the financial burden of trying to do some of those upkeeps.
Right. No, that's excellent. No, I think that's, that's a fantastic use of the CPC funds. Then I'm certain it'll be taken advantage of. So, yeah, I don't want to overwhelm the process with too many things at once, but I, I'd like to, like, put a pin in that if there's any way to find the, evidently, they had a plan drawn up for the building that they were going to build. That's what I was told.
I have seen that, yes.
Oh, okay. I'd like to at least see that plan. I'm curious about it.
You talk about that was, the law was supposed to go for the senior center.
No, not the seniors. This is actually a housing unit, was my understanding. This, I know there was a senior center proposal too, but there was a proposal to, I guess, build another unit, building.
Bruce Adams' work.
So, that was part of the 2013 Affordable Housing Committee report that was put forward, and that was done with Denise McClure, who was a consultant that the Planning Board hired, or, excuse me, the Affordable Housing Committee hired back then to move forward with that project. So, I do have some of those documents in the Planning Board office, and I can scan those, and I can put those together and provide those to the board.
Yeah, information would be great. Affordable housing study. Okay, I've only seen the one, the 2004 Affordable Housing. I didn't see the 2013 one. Okay, great, thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to drag that out for so long. My iPad died. What's next on the agenda? Save me. Oh, wait, it's coming on. So, we had, did we have your time yet? We did old unfinished business things?
You haven't done other items, not reasonably anticipated.
Anything not reasonably anticipated? No, okay, good. And now it's Town Administrator time.
So, I just have a few updates to provide the board. For the fiscal year 2026 budget, we have been working to finalize what we have for requests. So, what we're looking at now, and this is the requested all-in budget, we're looking at a shortfall of approximately $150,000. This does not include some of the other moving pieces, and it does not include the ongoing collective bargaining that is currently going on with the police. So, there are ways for that shortfall to grow. Again, we do not have the final number of the schools, so we're only really working with the 2.5% for the Pawtucket Regional School District. We don't have a final number from Whittier. So, there are other unknowns at this point in time, but I just wanted to keep the board aware of the fact that an all-in, all-requested budget is still looking, as though we're, we're at a shortfall with the projected revenues. The next item I wanted to update the board on is the Merrimack Valley Planning Organization is holding their retreat tomorrow. I had been asked to make a presentation specifically focusing on some of the highlights that Groveland has been working on with the MEVA fixed bus route, as well as the tip projects for the Community Trail and for the Route 97 project. And so, I think it's a really great opportunity to showcase what Groveland's been working on, and I'm really excited to be going, and hopefully, I'll have a good update to report, and I will also share with you my presentation slides once they're completed. The next update is about the Whittier Tech Regional Vocational School and Northern Essex Community College Municipal Working Group kickoff meeting. Sorry, that's a mouthful, and I said it really fast. But essentially, they have, they went before the MSBA to ask whether or not they would consider moving forward. They had a agreement that Groveland signed on to see whether or not we would be committed to exploring a shared campus model. All of the communities, except for Rowley, had signed on. The MSBA had stated that they were willing to follow through and to work with the group, seeing that there was a greater interest. So, therefore, they are assembling a working group. So, as part of the working group, it will be municipal leaders, mayors, and town managers engaging in a discussion to explore the next steps for a potential shared campus model. So, at the next upcoming meeting, which should be on Tuesday, I mean, excuse me, Monday, the 27th, we will be working on taking a look at the near-final Donna Hugh Institute Report and Recommendations: Potential Project Model Strategies for Achieving a More Cost-Effective Project, and planning for a regional agreement with the state and NECC as a partner. So, since the Chair is not able to participate in these discussions, the Vice Chair will be stepping in and will be representing the town. I will be there as well. And for full transparency, I would like to note that my father has been selected to facilitate the discussions, but there is no decision-making involved in this facilitation, and his role is entirely to guide the conversation and to ensure a productive dialogue. For the project requests and residential concerns, I did have a gentleman approach me about the town accepting the HERO Act. So, this is something that was passed by the state legislature that introduces benefits for veterans. Specifically, there's an additional property tax exemption, as well as a motor-vehicle excise exemption. So, upon learning more about what the law offers, I did some more research, and it seems as though we actually need to adopt and accept this statute in order to be able to move forward. So, that does require a town meeting vote. So, I have started to draft a warrant article that we can put forward if the board so chooses to accept this. And this would particularly apply for the property tax exemption clause and not necessarily the motor-vehicle excise exemption. So, I do have something drafted, and I will be putting that before the board as part of a warrant article. But again, wanted to bring that to your attention, and wanted to thank this gentleman for bringing it to our attention, as well as I think that the board would agree that we do want to support our veterans and make sure that they have opportunities, especially when it requires us to take action to make sure that they can. For field-use permits and special event permits, we did issue a field-use permit for the Groveland baseball to use Washington Park. This will be from March 1st through October 1st. For important and upcoming dates, I just wanted to again remind everybody about the Housing Workshop on January 30th, at 6:30 PM here at Town Hall. And I just wanted to start putting off a reminder that town meeting is on April 28th this year. For grants, the Fire Department has been awarded a $13,920 grant from the State Firefighter Safety Equipment. They will be using the grant to purchase a new hose. Their current hose is extremely old and in need of replacement, so we're very excited about that. And just to note, one of the things that we did see as part of the award process is that the Governor has stated that this discretionary funding will, in the future, be tied to MBTA compliance. So, in the future, if the town does not adhere to MBTA compliance, they will no longer be able to apply and receive grants of this nature. For procurement, 2025-11, the roadway resurfacing contract has been put out to bid. Bids are due Thursday, February 13th. This is something that Arthur Marcos had come before the board and talked to you all about, so we're really excited that we will get a contractor in board that will be able to do just about everything, not just one contract for milling and the other for paving. So, having a comprehensive contract will allow us to do a lot more. And we do have a lot of projects in queue, especially with some of the monies and the grant set-asides that we have for the area on Yale, Harvard, Salem, as well as the intersection over on School Street as well. And then, for Community Preservation Projects, we talked a little bit about the Affordable Housing and Repair Program that was put forward, and then the other applications received for the Groveland Congregational Church clock and bell restoration, the Save Our Last Mill Building application, and the trail enhancement project. So, those were the four applications that were received by the CPC by the December 31st deadline. The CPC is in the process of reviewing those applications, and once they have reviewed them, they will be making a presentation for the board. And then afterwards, you'll see, under the meetings, events, and seminars, things that I've been doing the last two weeks. If there's any specific meeting that you'd like additional details on, I'm more than happy to provide them.
Are we good? Everybody good?
Yep.
Yes, okay. All right. So, we're up to Select Board time and reports. Ed, do you have any time reporting to do?
I don't have any.
Okay, Mark?
No, I'm good.
Jason?
I just want to again thank the Highway Department for all the hard work overnight to keep the roads clear and safe. It was sort of refreshing to see everybody out playing on Nun's Hill in the morning.
Did you?
No, I did not. I had my dogs, and I didn't want to go out into the snow, so. But yeah, I just wanted to thank them because they, they definitely do a great job.
Becky?
Yep, Jason took my, my thank you, my shout-out.
He stole your thunder?
Yeah, because...
I'll call on you first next time, so you can beat him to it. So, and I just want to stress this, this Housing Workshop on January 30th, is that a Thursday night?
That's correct.
Thursday night, so a week from this Thursday, I think if you can get word out to everybody you know, I think that people look at it as a, "Oh, yeah, blah, blah, blah." But if you regard it more like people regard their trash, you got to get, if you don't get involved now and learn about it, we're going to need to make a decision at town meeting. Hopefully, we'll make a good decision. But this is the time to ask all your questions and hear their answers, because the experts will be here, right? So, anything you're worried about it, there's a lot at stake here as far as our grant funding for our highways. You heard for the Fire Department, I assume the Police Department as well. That doesn't mean we sell out the town just to get grants, that's not what I'm saying. But if you consider carefully the size of our town, under these requirements, we're under 7,000, so we're not being held to the higher bar that larger towns are. We're also not being held to the higher bar because we do not have a railroad station in town. So, there's a good likelihood that this might be something that will be okay to adopt for us. But I suggest we all go Thursday night and, and hear what they have to say, and ask questions to make sure that it's okay with us. And if it is, then go to town meeting and get this done. So, please go. I know, nobody likes to go out to a Housing Workshop, sorry. It's just not that exciting. But I'm going to go, okay? And so are you.
Yep.
Okay.
Will it be recorded, if I know of? I'm just curious.
You're not going?
No, I'm going.
Okay, just checking.
I will be there.
I will be there.
I'm not...
Okay, all right, all right, so now...
What time is it?
Oh, time, time, wait, it's right here. 6:30 PM. Are you going?
Of course. I haven't missed one yet.
Okay, good. All right. Correspondence, I don't see anything. Okay, that being the case, I'm going to call the board into an executive session. That means you all got to get out, except for us, and you. Y'all. Okay, so I'm going to read it officially. Thank you, Mark, because my iPad's... Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, calling the board into an executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel. There's a lot of...
Are we still live?
We need to roll.
I've got to finish, I've got to do the roll call. Negotiate with non-union personnel on a contract with non-union personnel, the fire chief. And I'll do a roll call. That's the motion. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call. Becky?
Present.
Just say yes.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy, yes?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Okay, we're now in executive session. I'm going to turn off the mics. Turn off the cameras, please. Do I need to push a button here?
Yeah, push the button.
Oh, look, it does that. Did, do I turn it off?